Good crowd with us this morning on behalf of the Commissioner's Office. We appreciate folks being with us today. Out of the gate, I want to give Heather an opportunity from Job and Family Services to maybe to introduce some folks we might not have met.
Perfect. I understand Heather, who I first saw, Ashley Carter has been with Job and Family Services for quite some time in junior school with the Resources Department since August of 2022. And brand new this week is Brittany The Rock Morton. She actually came to us bragging about her county benefits because her husband has been working for the engineers on this, so she'll be aware of the benefits that came with the position within the county. And she's very excited to be here as well.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to CVO. Introduce yourselves any further if you'd like.
Yeah, so I'm Ashley and I'm back. My service here will be four years November. I worked in child support. I also worked at Hyamies Jobs for a little bit. There was a little bit of a time in between that where I left to the county and I came right back very quickly, the first chance I got. So I love HR. Happy to work with Abby and Heather and Brittany this week and see what kind of direction we can take through that's HR.
Welcome and thank you.
I'm Brittany. Only five days into my position, but so far I love it. I come from an OB-GYN office here in town, so I'm familiar with the benefits as well too with helping patients. But I am very excited to work with Heather and Ashley and Abby and opportunity and I will retire from here.
Well, that's kind of you to say. Did I catch a nickname there in your original introduction?
I mean, you can Brittany, but you can call me Brett.
It was Brittany something, something. What did you say, Heather?
Her name is Brittany The Rock Morton.
Oh, gosh, I thought you called her Brittany The Rock.
Now there's a nickname.
How does she get to be The Rock?
You do have a nickname now.
I haven't spelled my last name. I say T H Rock.
All right, I'm gonna The Rock for now. Listen, I love you.
Nothing to say other than welcome everybody today. We just came from United Way Breakfast. It was great. Fairfield County was presented with an award because of major increase in giving this year. So we're pretty proud of Fairfield County and we hope to do better next year.
Appreciate folks being with us today. I think we're gonna break here. So last night, and we may talk a little bit more about this later, a number of us were up in Liberty Township at a meeting with, I'd estimate 300. I mean, I don't know, somewhere probably definitely north of 200.
Eric Tudor counted them and he said it was 300.
Anyway, a big crowd of folks that were interested in a number of topics regarding the future and potential growth concerns in the county. And Jeremiah got spotted up a few times and did a nice job answering some questions on transportation issues. Tony Vogel got spotted up a few times and did a good job with some water and sewer concerns in that part of the county. And then Rick got pointed up a couple of times on some economic development type issues, some of the ways that local governments can influence the revenue streams associated with developments. I just was really proud of y'all. You know, I mentioned to some of the guys this morning, it wasn't our meeting and we didn't try to make it that way. If I had spoken, I would have just made sure that those people in attendance there last night understood that Jeremiah and Tony and Rick and Planning Next and Annie and the Commissioner's Office, I mean, we're just offering to be helpful to the townships. There's no top-down plan being pushed on people or any demands that we're making. We're just trying to be a resource. And last night was, I thought, pretty over the top in terms of the job you all did and being that resource. The townships have some difficult decisions to make in the near term. So anyway, just wanted to say thank you for that last night. And then Rick, just give us what you've got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, I think one of the big things about last night was just the sheer presence of county officials there too, you know, ten plus people there showing the support. So I think that makes a difference. All right, well, I want to kind of go through some highlights and economic workforce development update. We're gonna do, just kind of focus on some of the newer stuff that we've been tackling here. But one of the big things is we have a growing team with a lot of new folks. So I wanted to make sure that we brought them here and were able to kind of talk about them and their roles as the things that we do have expanded really beyond what most economic development departments do in central Ohio. You know, we've really taken on workforce development. We serve as the Area 20 Workforce Development Board staff, which covers five counties. And you know, there's a lot that's tied to that too. So just kind of want to go through the team here. So Deshaun Tony, who's our Deputy Director, her and Carrie Stone are, they will be here today, but they're dealing with a student issue right now at the Workforce Center. So, which really has been Deshaun's main role as she started here. She's sort of the principal of the Workforce Center, kind of handling any, you know, student issues, working with the students, working with the schools, overseeing career navigators and that type of an area, which, you know, has been great because I don't have to, you know, zoom back and forth to the Workforce Center all the time with these issues. So it's been great to have that additional resource. Vince Carpeco, who's one of the veterans now, he's been here for, oh yeah, a year and a half, wow. So Vince is Economic Development Specialist. And then Anthony Iakini is our Economic Development Coordinator. So that's sort of our Economic Development Team. And on the tag team, a few different things. I call Anthony the Dirk Bricks guy. So when it comes to the development, when it comes to the stuff with Planning Next, where we identify areas that we need to develop, tax incentives, those types of things, Anthony's gonna be running point on those. Whereas things like the Port Authority, revolving loan fund, the Fairfield 33 Alliance, that's where Vince will be focusing on that. He'll also be focusing on our current businesses. So he'll be doing business retention and expansion calls. Jenny Surgeon, who is the Workforce Center face and quite frankly, everything, you know, you guys have heard her name here numerous times for thanking her and how good of a work she does with service at the Workforce Center. We didn't know what that role was gonna look like when she started a little more than a year ago, so she's also a veteran. Was organizing all of the different events and different things. You guys were out there on Friday when the Speaker of the House was at the Workforce Center. And at the same time, we had a leadership conference, we had a regional meeting with other Workforce Board Directors, we had IT setting up the computer lab, we had teamwork coming to set up their room because they're gonna be moving there later this week. And then we had the Speaker of the House giving me up for bombing classes. All of those things going on, Jenny does such a great job coordinating and organizing all of those for us. Angel Conrad, who truly is a veteran, she's been here since about when I started six-plus years ago. And so her role's Department Assistant, but also Fiscal Specialist. We have a lot of budgets that we have to work with. Our department budget, the Workforce Center budget, which is growing more and more, Fairfield 33 Alliance budget, the Port Authority budget, the RLF budget, and the, we owe a Area 20 Workforce Board budget. So she's become the number bouncer extreme. On the WEO side, and this is kind of important because these are funds paid for with our WEO funds, but Bailey Fields, who I learned I have not yet brought here to introduce to the group, so yeah. Audience looks like, oh, I know, I know. My defense, Bailey was with JFS, so I guess I just assumed, I'm gonna blame Cory on this. So Bailey is our Employer Services Specialist. So that covers specifically, she's covering Fairfield and Pickaway Counties. So her role is to work with businesses in those counties to help them with hiring needs, training needs, those types of things using, you know, our Workforce Board for that. Prior to that, what was your role? But we told our friend Cory. And then Adam Salaco, also a veteran, more than a year. He's covers our, he's Workforce Development Specialist on the WEO side. Has really done a good job of kind of taking, and we have five Hyamies Job Centers that sort of roll up underneath us, and Adam has run points all of that. So he meets with them monthly, helps with getting the board, everything ready for the board meetings. Has really driven some cool initiatives and some cool stuff he and Bailey have worked together in a team that we'll talk about here in a minute. So, and then our career navigator. So these individuals, they're funded through the Fairfield 33 Alliance and the local schools along with some grants that we've received, about $210,000 in grants. Carrie Stone, who's our point person at the Workforce Center, who you guys have met up here numerous times, she's truly a veteran, she's four years as a career navigator, does a great job organizing all of those programs and everything. We're really lucky to have her. Beth Mingyar, who she joined as a career navigator, her husband is on our 33 Alliance Board and kept talking to her about all the cool stuff that we're doing. And she was a corporate trainer and close to retirement, and she was just like, you know what? I would love to do that. That's, I would love to go out and work with youth and try to help them get jobs. So that's been a great opportunity. And Krista Blower, who is another career navigator, she's based in Lancaster Schools and she actually works with elementary schools all the way up with their career readiness. So helping, trying to get more students involved in careers. Lancaster's really dove into this. Only 25% of Lancaster's students actually get a college degree, but 75% of their students do not get a college degree. So you're talking about about 330 students a year. So they're doing a great job of really trying to get kids from elementary school up to think about what local jobs look like. On the economic development side, one thing that we've done recently, we've created a community reinvestment area in Violet Township. So everything in the green here falls under that community reinvestment area. And what that means is that if a parcel wants to, somebody wants to develop a parcel, they then can contact us to officially get the CRA. So what the CRA does is it allows up to 15 years, 100% tax abatement. So it's a tool used across the state of Ohio to try to get companies to locate here. So this is the first CRA we've set up from a county standpoint. It's a good opportunity. This is a high-growth area all along 33, and it's just a great tool because what the CRA does is it's sort of like that carrot for the developer to say, okay, if you want the CRA, here's these other things that you're gonna need to do to be able to get that. So we'll have a, I'll be talking about some developments here in a second, but this is a great tool. We're really closely with Violet Township on this. Vince really helped get this together and move in with us through the state. And it's gonna be really good for development in that area. The crew drawing here that I may have pulled together last night, this is the development area that's really focused in the CRA. Now, you see the CW, those Stanford, Canal Winchester, the numbers were just identified as three different parcels. But we have 380 acres all along Route 33 that are, it's a really great opportunity for development for us. Now, not all of those are developable because there are gas pipelines going right through the middle of these, so they have to be kind of careful on how they build. But this is a, you know, think about how close this is to 70. This is our prime land. Canal Winchester has three of these parcels. Canal Winchester has been going through a strategic plan of their own. They've sort of put like a little moratorium on development as they try to figure out long-term what they want to be. So while they slowed down on that, Violet Township has gotten a lot of interest. So there's three parcels here in Violet Township that we've been working on closely with some developments. And we'll be bringing some stuff in front of the Commissioners here, one of these in the next couple of weeks, or some incentive agreements that really, the biggest key here is trying to get that Ozal Western Road whole corridor approved because you're talking about, you know, manufacturers, distribution centers, things that will need truck traffic. And in doing that, that road is not conducive long-term for truck traffic. So we've been working with Jeremiah and Transportation Improvement District to improve these, especially that curve around King East and trying to, short-term, make that able so trucks can turn, but long-term, having a better solution with a cut through and a roundabout at King's Crossing. So that's, that's critical. And that total cost is around $10 million. And what we've been doing is we don't want to pay for that out of our pockets, we want the developers to pay for that. So as I mentioned earlier, where we have the CRA as sort of the carrot, we're saying, okay, we'll give you this CRA, but in return, we expect this from you to help pay for improvements all along this corridor, not just things specifically tied to your project, which normally with development, developers just pay for what's tied to their project and that's it. But the reality is, we can't have any trucks going on this road unless we make improvements. So we're working closely with Canal Winchester, Violet Township. It's a lot of moving pieces to this, lots of moving pieces. But this will be the first real big project we've done like this ever as a county with the township. Most of the development has happened in municipalities. So this will be a good model, already serves as a good model, for things like what we're looking to possibly do in Liberty Township that we talked about yesterday. On the 33 Alliance side, Stephanie Bosco has joined Lancaster as their Economic Development Director and has really embraced the whole regionalism and, you know, county-city partnership. So we're working together with Crowd Communications on building out a really cool presentation that us, Lancaster, Pickerington, Canal, everybody can use when we're looking at trying to attract businesses to the community. So, and the one thing that, you know, as we went with Crowd, we used to talk about how much the county is investing in economic development, in workforce development, in the Workforce Center, in ways that other counties aren't. And we want to really be able to articulate that as we talk to businesses. When we met with Allegard a couple of weeks ago, that's one thing that they were just kind of shocked at, you know, number one, it was, I can't believe everybody's works together this well. Like that's, we don't see that everywhere. We are the first community that ever worked with something like this, and they're like, you've set the bar really high. And a big part of that was the collaboration, but the other thing was when they were at the Workforce Center, they're like, the county owns this building? Like they were shocked and they're like, so they're really investing in this. We're like, yeah, we want to make sure you have employees, not just now, but into the future. So, you know, that's something we want to make sure that they understand because that's gonna help their ROI, and that's really what businesses care about. So that's great, I think, from a business attraction standpoint. So we're building that out and I'm excited to, you know, probably a month from now, what that whole setup will look like. Yeah, that'd be great. Speaking about, we had, so we have a great relationship with Spectra News and they'll reach out to me every now and then asking about any story ideas. And so we shared Allegard with them and they got right on it. And the one thing about Allegard is a lot of manufacturers are very tight about sharing things. They are wide open and willing to let cameras come in and interview people. So this is, this is great. So it's always great when, when they run stuff like this to kind of promote our, our community. And I did not pay them to say that work made the plight of the Workforce Center. That was all them. Another thing is with, with planning, like our meeting last night, which I thought Vince Popsider did a great job from Planning Next with, and especially with the tax question, jumping in there and answering that question. That went beyond their scope, by the way. But we will have our public meeting on March 13th from 5:30-7 in the Workforce Center, and then another public meeting next Wednesday, March 8. We have an active transportation planning that Anthony's been helping to get out there since James Minko has left. Anthony's kind of helped take the lead on that, and we're gonna have that in three different locations. So anybody that can attend either of these, that would be wonderful. On the workforce development side, we have driver's education already started at the Workforce Center. Right now, we are just enrolled students that are in the Workforce Center right now. And Hockey College is running that. But through this whole thing with Fairfield Union and Lancaster, we got Hockey College in, to basically, they're gonna be doing driver's ed for Fairfield Union and Lancaster also. So instead of using that other group that they originally talked about using, it's great, it kind of brings it all, you know, under one roof with Hockey doing it.
We couldn't stay on driver's ed for a minute. I know, I sent you the video of the article anyway regarding what's happening with folks in that 16 to 19-year-old range in terms of driver's ed. If you, if you go back to my generation, I mean, I'm almost 60 years old, something like 85 or 86% of us rushed out and got our driver's license when we turned 16. And then you look at numbers today, and that number might be hanging out in the low 40s in terms of the percentage of kids in that 16 to 19 range that are going out and getting their license. And, and I don't really understand all that from like a chicken or the egg issue. Like they stopped giving driver's ed because people stopped wanting it, or people stopped wanting it, so they stopped giving it. I don't know which way that went, but I just know for a number of our local employers, not having an abundant access to potential people in that 16 to 19-year-old range to work has been a significant issue. So I'm really encouraged by at least getting that option back on the table for driver's ed for the people in those age ranges. Looking forward to seeing if that positively influences those numbers that we looked at. But anyway, please.
Well, I mean, we have, I think it's nine students right now at the Workforce Center that are taking driver's ed, and they need driver's licenses to get their jobs full-time. And it's kind of like, we have that control now. It's not like, oh, we'll try to sign up. It's no, you're signing up. Here's how it works. You need to go. Did you go to your driver's ed? It helps Carrie kind of stay on top of them that way. So it's, it's been a great benefit and thank you to the Commissioners for their investment in that. We have our normal four pre-apprenticeship programs going through. We are working on a manufacturing one that we will have for next year. We also do phlebotomy, and we're partnering with Fairfield Medical Center on working on externships and things for those students, but also trying to get phlebotomy to be a pre-apprenticeship also. What that does is it allows us to use different funding sources to be able to cover these programs. We have CDL going on right now at the Workforce Center. We do need to come up with a better long-term solution for a CDL lot. We had some new conversations with Jeremiah, some programs that he's looking at on the asphalt side, and maybe there's some things that we can combine there. But there is, there is a need. I probably get a call every couple of days from somebody needing CDL training, and we can only do two students at a time. So huge need. And then we've got summer camps coming again this summer. We've expanded them, but we've shortened them so they're gonna be just in the morning. But we're working with Lancaster Schools on trying to build these out further, and we're gonna have, for the first time, an all-girl STEM camp, which we're really excited about because, you know, one of the things Intel's really pushed is they want more female workers in their industry, and we're really gonna try to, you know, start that going with an all-girl STEM camp. So we're excited about that. And actually, that will be paid for through the Intel Grant with OU. Couple of save the dates, we have a career expo on March 30th, and our graduation for our pre-apprentices, or for our Workforce Center students will be on May 12th. So we're excited about that. And another cool thing that we're doing is working with our Hyamies Job Centers and trying, you know, there's just been such a downturn since COVID of people coming through the doors. So we received a $300,000 grant through WEO to build out some various things. We're gonna have a new later study, but another big part of it is a, a marketing push to try to campaign to get people interested in these in-demand jobs. So we have billboards up, we've got a lot of social media ads, these are some of the ads. And the whole focus is just trying to get people to contact our Hyamies Job Centers. And Bailey or Adam, how many people, since this started a couple of weeks ago, have we got?
It's been 150 leads.
150 leads that have come through from these ads of people contacting our Hyamies Job Centers to take advantage of these things. So contracted, it's really a cool media company out of Columbus. Actually, now they're working with Jobs Ohio on possibly doing something like this across the state. So once again, we are ahead of it, and I'm really excited to see more of these results. And another thing that we're doing is we're working on promotional videos. So we've contracted with Interface Video, and what they'll be, what they're doing is they're going out and really, instead of saying, hey, start a new career, sort of, do you want to work here? Well, contact our Hyamies Job Center and we'll help you get there, whether it's through training or whether through funds. So if we could cue one of the Miller's Fabricating video. And we'll chop these up and use these to social media. These are the lines in Fairfield County, but this is area-wide, so this is covering five different counties. And Bailey and Adam have been, you know, driving this, going out to the companies. And then we have a lot of raw footage. And then we have a lot of raw footage, so we give that to the media, the marketing firm. And Columbus, they pick out pieces that they think, you know, might, might hit. And we're going to be running ads on TikTok and different things like that. So I'm really excited. I mean, to get those leads already is amazing, and we haven't really, you know, hit it into high gear yet, so.
Five there. I probably got briefed on this at some point, but we got it. But I thought Eastland Fairfield was kind of, I mean, I thought they were thumbing their nose at what we were doing, and now they're, they're up there on a screen. So what, what changed?
Um, I'd say our relationship has gotten much better over the last six months. You know, they've been more open to kind of seeing us as an opportunity versus competitor. And, and we need to recognize that they are a great opportunity for students to be able to come through, get training, and get jobs. So, you know, they'll be a part of this and what, so just like you saw a part where there's the workforce center on there, you'll be seeing ads with Eastland Fairfield that'll highlight those programs because we want, you know, individuals to, whether they're going to Eastland, whether they're going to UU, well, Hocking, workforce center, we want them to get skilled in this and, and then to move on. So yeah, I think, and there's actually, they're, the current superintendent is retiring, and we're going to have a new superintendent, so I'm looking forward to even hopefully building, even a better relationship.
Well, I don't want to drag this on, so I know we've got a full day today, but, but the possibility of cooperation between Eastland and our operation, I, I just think, I, I know that's down in the weeds of the whole deal or whatever, but that's a big doggone deal if that were to materialize.
Is my goal to, to bring everybody under the tent. So feel like, I feel like we'll get there. So these are just a few highlights, some of the new stuff that we've, we've tackled, and it's exciting. We've got a great team and being able to, you know, to be able to just, like Senator Bailey and Adam throughout the countryside, all of these companies to make sure this happens. And so I really appreciate the continued investment from the commissioners, so we can continue to do great things as a team. So that's our story.
On behalf of the commissioner's office, I appreciate your work and the work of your entire team. I'm being completely transparent, sometimes in my mind, I'll bounce back and forth between what is all this costing us and what are all the gains going to be? And I, I continue to kind of have that, that tennis match in my head with the ball going back and forth on that. But I'm currently where you is wanting to be, which is supportive of, of these efforts because I, I think with a number of the things that we're experiencing as a county and in the region, your team is positioning us for, for some pretty exciting opportunities. So I'm currently where I need to be on that, but I do occasionally find myself wandering in a, about the whole shooting match, so.
Our goal is to keep you in that recurring mindset with all the good stuff we're doing and hopefully more. And we have 57 students, well, probably 56 now, students taking class, finishing the program, you know, this year, that hopefully will all find employment in Fairfield County. So.
Thank you for the presentation. Commissioner Love, any questions or comments?
I don't. Rick knows how I feel and how I feel about this workforce opportunity. And, and, you know, with being able to collaborate with Eastland, the Career Center is going to be a big deal, and I, I expect that to improve dramatically.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you very much, Rick. This time, the commission sets aside an opportunity for voters and taxpayers to address the commission. If you'd like to do so, please come down to the podium, if you're able, and start with your name and residential address. The commissioners, I don't, I don't know about Commissioner Love, so I got full schedule today, back-to-back-to-back meetings, so we will ask for your courtesy on our three-minute guideline for presentations. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission at this time? All right, well, this gentleman stood up just barely in front of you, but we're going to get, everybody gets their shot.
I think I do want you to.
Okay, thank you. So I made a copy of my prepared remarks. Mr. Davis.
Thank you for you. I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Good morning. My name is Steve Feeny. My address is on the sign and sheet. I am here today to once again voice my opposition to utility solar plants in Fairfield County in Ohio. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, is currently taking comments right now on ways to limit the negative impacts renewables have on grid reliability. PJM is a regional transmission organization, coordinates the movement of electricity in 13 states. Fairfield County is in the PJM region. Very recently, PJM asked FERC for permission to implement a two-year moratorium on grid-scale solar hookups. Let me say that again because I think it is very important. PJM has asked FERC permission for them, PJM, to implement a two-year moratorium on grid-scale solar hookups. To put it very simply, Houston, we have a problem. And that problem lies squarely at the feet of another organization with the acronym NERC, the North American Electric Reliability Council, whose sole mission is electric grid reliability and security. That reliability and security is faltering. Hence the PJM request to FERC. Noteworthy, I think, the request came from PJM and not NERC, be that as it may. The three operating solar facilities in Ohio, Harden, Hillcrest, and New Market, according to the Ohio Power Siting Board website, total 450 megawatts. And as I discussed here before, solar facilities in Ohio generate, generate nowhere near nameplate capacity, and these three facilities will find it difficult to generate the equivalent of 50 megawatts in one year. A coal plant could generate this additional electrical power in minutes. It could be simpler than that. Are solar plants required in Fairfield County? No. The plants aren't needed, they're not convenient, and they're not in the public interest. Apparently, PJM is also beginning to wonder about the wisdom of this solar implementation. You, Mr. Davis, Mr. Love, and also I have one for Mr. Fix if you'd like, are our county commissioners. Via House Bill and Senate Bill 52, you can help PJM with their moratorium right here in Fairfield County. Lastly, instead of my standing here for three minutes every so often, I'd be willing to assist you in your efforts to support PJM's requested moratorium. Thank you, Commissioner.
I know this speech ought to be three minutes and three seconds if I go fast, okay? Good morning. My name is Emily Hayek, and I'm the eighth generation on my family farm outside of Pleasantville that was founded in 1811. It is one of the oldest farms in Fairfield County and will be surrounded by solar panels. I'm speaking to you today on behalf of my son, who wants to be the ninth-generation farmer. I'm also here today on behalf of all of our future farmers of the next generation. I'm going to be referencing your 2018 land use plan that can be found in the Fairfield County Regional Planning. The planning, or the plan was specifically made for the next generation to continue farming in Fairfield County for a better future. The land use plan was developed with three things in mind. First, managing growth that talks about protecting prime agriculture land and the beauty of Fairfield County. Second, fostering stewardship by promoting grassroots efforts and public and private partnerships that enhance the neighborhood quality of life. Third, investing wisely, which means to continue to refine and implement an aggressive program to preserve prime farmland. This means that the Fairfield County will continue to grow, therefore reaping the benefits of economic prosperity while retaining the charm and inherent attractiveness that's so important to the citizens of this county and the state of Ohio. When looking at the farmland survey results, over the next 20 years, the number one greatest concern on that survey was population growth and related development affecting the significant reduction in farmland in Fairfield County. 55% were concerned about the enroachment of non-agricultural development pressures. One of those top bush statements was, "The only way for the next generation to continue farming in Fairfield County is to have a land use plan." Also, the farming industry is being taken grand for, and there is a lack of respect. In your current farmland preservation plan on page 62, part of the 140,000 acres deemed to be made protected agriculture are signed up for the industrial solar production. This plan is some of the richest in Fairfield County. The land use planning zone should be reviewed and weighed against the future plan, future land use planning area. The goal of your land use plan is that Fairfield County will be on a sustainable development that maintains the rural appeal that residents have grown to love with the suburban growth tied to the expanding Columbus region. Agriculture has strong roots in Fairfield County. It is who we are. It benefits our citizens and businesses. I would not be standing in front of you today if I did not care about the land, the community it surrounds, and the next generation. Land is something that you can't make more of, and once it's gone, it's gone forever. Once the solar panels go up, there is no restoring that land back to its original state to be farmed again. It is forever destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Garland Snyder. My address is 150 Bladwick Road, Millersport, Ohio, kind of Straddle, Walnut Township and Liberty Township. Want to go to vote. Liberty Township, Walnut School District. So it's exciting. Anyway, I will keep this to at least three minutes and maybe less. I'm here for Citizens for Fairfields. One of the many concerns is the preservation of farmland, as you just heard Emily talk about. They're not making any more of it, as she said, so it's a pretty valuable, limited resource. A solar field. For solar industry information, it takes 480 acres of panels to produce 49 megawatts of energy. That equates to 49,000 kilowatts, if you're trying to figure out how many houses you could feed with that. So an example of proposed production in Fairfield County, EDF, is a company that's going to install Eastern Cotton Tail projects. They always use bond-friendly, warm and buzzy names for their projects. Anyway, they leased 2,157 acres. The initial plan is to use 1,570 acres for solar panels, substation, and a switching station. That's 1,189 football fields. It's to be enclosed with a six-to-seven-foot chain-link fence with two strands of barbed wire going around the top for about 20 miles of fencing. Typically, these fields also have a two-foot-deep concrete barrier around the entire field to discourage burrowing varmints from climbing in there. So they worry about any destruction or anything happening to those panels. They can catch on fire. The directions to the local fire departments are to let them burn if they catch on fire. They can become broken. Toxicity from those panels can seep into the ground, into your water supply. And as much as they've leased everything and have control over it, if there is any fallback from any toxicity getting into water supplies or the ground, that does fall back to the property owner, not the lessor. So they're finding that these solar fields, on average, only produce 10 to 12% of the power expected. So how many acres will it really take to get the power needed to make a meaningful difference? And finally, solar power energy is not less expensive. It's about two times the cost of natural gas, a certain more than coal, two times nuclear. And once we use it all, it all becomes just landfill. Can't dispose of it. It's just going to be, again, using more land just to bury what they have used up so far. And everyone's paying for that. All this, all the subsidies and everything from federal or state or county, tax subsidies all comes out of our tax dollars. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to ask you to address the commission at this time. I know some of the folks that presented to us today have not prior, previously presented to us, so I just want you to know this section, voters, taxpayers, address us is a time where we listen. It's not a time where we debate you or question you or anything like that. So I don't want you to misinterpret our silence in response to your remarks. It's specifically designed to be a time when you're listening as opposed to questioning or debating opinions that are brought to our attentions. So we do appreciate you all being with us today. Anyone else who should address us at this time? One footnote, and staff and I are going to try to chase this down to verify the accuracy of the information, but we were, many of us were at a meeting last night. We were one of the Liberty Township trustees, announced that they had recently been in contact with a developer called Open Road. As folks may know, there are, there are three solar projects that have been kind of discussed in the public, if you will, as far as Fairfield County is concerned. There's one down toward Amanda Way, there's the Eastern Cotton Tail, primarily centered in, I'll say Walnut Township. And then we were thinking that Open Road developing a potential, or thinking about developing a potential solar project in the, I would say centered more in the Liberty area, although I think it did go into Walnut a little bit too. And what was reported last night is that Open Road may be on ice in terms of that potential project. We don't, we didn't hear that directly from Open Road, so we're reaching out to them to try to understand if that information turns out to be true or not. Something else that I've mentioned in prior public meetings, I'll mention again now, whoever the developer is down in Amanda, we've heard different things about what's going on out there. We've heard that potential developer has changed hands like some number of times, and it's going to be one, and now it's going to be another, and then it's going to be another. What's going on down there? The key piece of information there is our office has not been contacted at all by any prospective developer out towards Amanda in terms of, you know, whatever's going on with that project. In fact, the only two developers we've heard from would be, I'd say, I'd call them EDF or Eastern Cotton Tail, and then Open Road. And as I said, it occurred last night from a trustee that that, that project may be on ice. I think we'll let you know whatever we know when we know it, and thank you all for your presentations and interest in this issue. Anything on legal? So as I mentioned, I'm kind of backed, backed, backed today, but if you all found five minutes, I would find five minutes to follow up on an issue that I'm confused about and would like some guidance on. Okay? Nothing negative towards you, it's just getting lost on an issue. I, I would appreciate that. Mr. Ray, update?
ARP update from the 30.6 received, 22.2 has been appropriated, 11.6 expended, and 4.2 encumbered are obligated. We have a couple resolutions on today that I'll speak to in a few minutes. We did have an opportunity to meet with Marcy Fields and her staff from Adam H. yesterday to get an update on their timeline and planning for their housing project, and I will share more information with you as we gather more from Marcy and her team. Bennett, if you can pop up the Senator Brown picture, that would be great. I think it was maybe about a week ago, Senator Sherrod Brown spoke with manufacturing, education, and community partnerships. and community partners at the Summer Manufacturing Institute Summit, which is where they work to plan for the upcoming summer camps. And Ms. Evelyn Neely, and yes, Dan is her father, is there with Senator Brown because she had previously participated in one of the Workforce Center's summer camps and, you know, shared that she was inspired then to begin or embark on an education in a STEM area because of that experience and was sharing that with the group there. Dan, Brown Dad, or Rick, do you want to add anything?
Hence, the opportunity, ever had this opportunity. It's great. What did the person email from Senator Brown's office about Evelyn?
Give me one second.
It was basic, basically it was, you couldn't have chosen somebody better to represent, and they were very impressed with her as a person.
She was very impressive.
Yeah, and they said a lot of good things about our camp, too, throughout the whole day, so. Patient about it, everybody.
You did highlight that there will be an all-female STEM camp this coming year as well, so maybe you can invite Evelyn back to be a speaker for that.
She can volunteer.
Okay, moving on. We do have a resolution that will be soon coming before the commission regarding establishing truck engine brake noise reduction zone in a designated portion of Coon Path. County engineer Jeremiah Up had received a number of complaints regarding excessive noise by engine combustion exhaustion systems, otherwise known as Jake brakes, and he is therefore recommending to the board that impose certain noise restrictions within the period of, or the section of Coon Path Road from essentially Election House 237. Jeremiah, you want to add anything on that?
Just that, I'm sure you all are aware through other discussions and travel around the county, how many trucks we have using Coon Path road. If we might see a spike around harvest time in the fall, when we have a lot more trucks on the road and whatnot, people tend to get frustrated when they're going by at all hours and things like that. So, I was a little bit reluctant because of it being a, you know, fall time thing to do it, until I looked into it and realized that it's not just fall, I just happen to get the calls in fall. There are, there is a problem going on most of the day, it's because of the trucks going through there. It's not something I recommend we do all over the county, but I think in this situation on Coon Path.
And Jeremiah, I don't know a lot about Jake brakes. I mean, I know a little bit, like it's a way that trucks make noise, and in some neighborhoods and situations, people don't appreciate the noise that gets made by the truck. The Jake brake itself, is that something where they're using the Jake brake in a downhill situation? Is that generally when they're using that, or do you know?
A lot of times they use it in a downhill situation, but they'll use it to stop about any place, okay? And really what a lot of the problem is, is if they have a legal exhaust system, it's not a problem. Most of the trucks that make a lot of noise when they use the engine combustion brake, the Jake brake, is because they've modified their exhaust, or their truck's so old that they don't have a current exhaust on. And, in essence, is really the root of that problem.
All right. But anyway, you know, Ani and I did have a chance to speak briefly about this, just a couple of quick points. One, bringing this up for discussion at a meeting before there's a resolution, I just wanted to say thank you for that practice on this issue. I think that's an appropriate way for us to do business, and you're doing that in this situation, I appreciate. Two, I don't see the commissioner's office getting down in the weeds of the research and the complaints and what you've been through to come to this point of recommendation. I see the commissioner's office showing a level of deference to the work that you've done to come to this recommendation and being supportive of it. So, I think that's where we are on that, and I just wanted to say thank you.
And I'll include Amy Brown Thompson, because I know she'd been working with Jeremiah on the creation of the resolution, so thanks to both of you.
Thank you, Ani. Reminded me that it would be a good idea to have this on media in early, so.
Good work. Team effort. All right, United Way Awards Banquet Day, Commissioner Levesey had alluded to that as we got going here. We did have the opportunity to attend that this morning, and Fairfield County as a whole did receive the chairman's award and recognition of our overall increased giving of about seventeen thousand, so, which is significant in the overall giving per United Way. The sheriff's and auditor's office did receive individual recognition, and we had two individuals within the county. Donna Stalter received the advocate award, and Ann, who's here, she got the, you were receiving a campaign coordinator award, so thanks for your work. And apparently, Ann pulled off the campaign at DD in one day. Nice job. And then Jeff Porter was recognized for his, his service as board president. You stay on the, right, as past president?
Three years.
Three years, okay. All right, moving on, highlights of resolutions, review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals, and we do have eighteen resolutions for the voting meeting today, which includes five proclamations. We have one recognizing Mary Ann Murphy, DD Awareness Month, Severe Weather Week, Sunshine Week, and World Water Day. We also have a resolution on to appropriate monies for health department upgrades and the transit study. A resolution to approve funding for the Village of Baltimore and Village of Pleasantville for their ARP water projects. We also have a resolution to sign the ESCO agreement for the Rickley Farm and authorization to sign the agricultural easement for that same farm, which is located at seventy-three ninety West Fall Road in Amanda, and that will be through the Clean Ohio Local Agricultural Easement Purchase Program with the Department of Agriculture. Jonathan, anything you want to add to that?
No, I think that's a mouthful, and it covers the majority of it. This is a farm that was selected in the spring of last year following the land use plan and has met the standard and expectation in the county to proceed, so we are close to closing this one within a year, which has been very rare, to be able to do them so quickly. But the Department of Agriculture has sped up their process, so everybody's happy about that, but it has a little more paperwork in front of us on a regular basis.
And this is one of the identified properties that was going along with the agreement that you all passed a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, no, we appreciate that, and I think that the commission will look favorably on that, Jonathan. I also want to go back to a resolution that Ani mentioned regarding transit. Ani and I will have a meeting later today with a group called RLS. RLS is the chosen one, if you will, favored by ODOT in terms of looking at transit and transit solutions for local jurisdictions. So, we'll get that started by meeting with them virtually this afternoon. The two primary components of that study will involve, on one hand, looking at where we currently are in terms of the provision of transit services in the community, and giving us maybe some ideas where we could or should be in terms of that provision of service. That's area one. Area two involves an analysis of governance structure. Currently, Lancaster Fairfield Public Transit is a City of Lancaster department. Some of us, myself, I'll say, question whether that ought to continue as a Lancaster Fairfield Public Transit City of Lancaster department, or whether there are reasons why maybe it should be a Fairfield County department, and perhaps even more specifically whether it ought to be connected to workforce development. We're not answering that question, we're asking that question, and I think it's real clear to make that, that point. Also want to make clear to everybody that there is no daylight between the City of Lancaster and Fairfield County in terms of asking that question, who should be running transit for the county. The City of Lancaster is open to analysis on this question and how it ought to resolve. So, we are in communication with the mayor, leadership of Lancaster City Council, and there was no, we're not throwing stones at the current operation, we're not being negative towards the city's handling of that service, we're just big picture, trying to understand what's the best methodology of service delivery here. I'm just guessing that everybody here drove to this place today. And so then, from that, we might all think that there's no problem with transit because we have cars. I'm just telling you, folks, if you're out and about, a whole bunch of people don't, they don't have driver's license, their license is suspended, they can't afford to get their license, they can't afford to buy a car. There's a, there's a segment of our community who actually wants to work and has an impediment, a problem in executing that desire. I get it. I've said it, I'm sure some of you have said it. Some of us think people don't want to work, and I, and I think there are some folks that fall into that category. I'm just telling you, I'm doing a lot of research, and there is a slice of our community who very much wants to work and is having trouble getting there, and we're, we're trying to think about that and what our part in that might be. Please continue.
Okay. Budget review, sales tax update, Bert.
Yes, our March sales tax preliminary numbers came in pretty strong again this last month, coming in about three percent higher, which is about three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars higher than the previous year. Our forecast is about five percent higher as we're estimating, but we continue to stay aligned with the auditor's office at the twenty-five point five, twenty-five point one million dollar budget as we continue to monitor the economy.
And Auditor Brown and I have had some, some good conversations, and are in sync on the issues as far as multiple different revenue streams. Some will, will be higher than what we had anticipated, some will be lower than what we anticipated, and the commissioner's office will continue to defer to the auditor's office for official estimates, of course, and we're not, we're not worried about those things in the short side of, of the horizon, we're not worried. Being in the long term, there are reasons why we might have some concerns. Auditor Brown, did you want to comment on that at all?
Our plan is to make incremental adjustments quarterly.
All right, recognition. County auditor Dr. Brown shared that Fairfield County will be well-represented on the State of Ohio's Geographically Referenced Information Program Advisory Council, which is part of the Department of Administrative Services. The goal here is to develop a statewide parcel database, and this will result in a way to share and distribute parcel data more effectively. And Dr. Brown congratulated Dave Bergai, our REA director, for being selected to serve on this statewide advisory committee. Thanks to the IT team, specifically Michael Gimmiehorm and Alex Johnson, thank you, for the work on the Clerk of Courts Pickerton title office move to the Fairfield Center. And I do think we have a few pictures, along with a few more thank yous from Clerk of Courts Brandon Meyer. Brandon wanted to send a thank you for Dan Neely and Brian Plummer for working on all of the access controls for the new office. He also wanted to thank Michael and Alex as well for their work, and then he wanted to thank John Coaches and Tammy Smith and the whole facilities team for their hard work and effort assisting in getting things moved from the old office to the new office and everything else that happened in between. So, we have some pictures here showing the new location. That's the drive-through window. Drive-through is not operational yet, there's still some work to do on that. That's the front. We will see where you would enter there, and the drive-through is off to the far right. And I think Brandon was hoping to be here today, but I think he may have got caught up with something else. And he had a couple pictures of his staff as well. Very nice. That's the staff, and go one more forward, Bennett, so they can see the interior. So, that's as you walk into it. Those are the workstations all the way around where folks can go up and have their title work completed, and a small sitting area there in the middle. Brandon says that's, that's hardly ever full, because they are able to take care of folks as they are coming in. There is work in progress to relocate the BMV from the shopping center where Brandon used to be located for the title office to the Fairfield Center, right next door to Brandon. So, that continues to have ongoing efforts, because their lease has not quite expired yet, but we are doing that planning work. You want to add anything, John?
No, I think it's another, a great project that gets us firmly planted.
Thank you, John. Mr. Levesey.
Yeah, I think it's interesting to note that, as Brandon mentioned, that drive-through is like only two or three in the whole state, so I think by adding that, it's going to make it a whole lot more convenient for especially incapacitated clients that aren't able to get in and so on and so forth. So, I think that's, that's really good.
It's a very nice option to have. Two other recognitions here, thanks to Sergeant Burke with the sheriff's office for his assistance at the Liberty Township trustee meeting last night for some crowd and parking management. He did a nice job there. And I'd be remiss not to thank engineer Jeremiah Up, utilities director Tony Vogel, and economic and workforce development Rick Zabreck. They did great presentations last night, but even more importantly, your guys' response to the Q and A. You had no idea what questions would come your way, and you all handed them with style and grace and on point, so thank you for your work there. Calendar review and invitations received. Bennett?
Yeah, Bennett, we're having timing problems, so let's roll. New calendar review and invitations received. Regional Planning Commission Special Meeting, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three at five thirty PM in the Records Center. The Fairfield Thirty-Three Development Alliance Meeting on March second at eight thirty at the South Central Power Company. The Economic Development Strategic Plan Steering Committee Meeting, March seventh at two PM in the Commissioner's Hearing Room. And the Celebration of Possibilities on May seventeenth at six PM at the Wickmaw Event Center in Pickerton. Under correspondence, City of Lancaster, Storm Order Department, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, Retention Detention Pond Inspection Report, a memo from the Fairfield County Auditor, dated February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Subjects: Current Agricultural Use Value Program Deadline Approaching, Electronic Processes for Conveyance of Property Record of Seventy-five Percent, and Conveyance Fee Collections by Lancaster Police Department Annual Report, twenty twenty-two, received on February twenty-second. A thank you from the County Auditor's Office for invitation, for initiation of new I-nine management and employment verifications, letters from Fairfield County residents regarding solar energy, press release from the, from the Office of the County Auditor, Friday, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, titled Current Agricultural Use Value Deadline is March sixth. Ohio Justice Alliance for Community Corrections, Winter Twenty Twenty-three Newsletter, CCAO Twenty Twenty-three to Twenty Twenty-four Legislative Platform, the Meals on Wheels Twenty Twenty-four Budget Packet, received February twenty-seventh, press release from Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, titled Fairfield County to Hold Public Meetings for Active Transportation Plan. And lastly, the press release from Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, dated Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, titled Fairfield County to Hold Public Meetings for Economic Development Plan, and that update to the twenty eighteen Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And that's it.
Thank you, Bennett. Jail population last week, the sheriff reported two forty-eight total, with eighteen of those being contracted. This week, the grand total is two fifty-two, with twenty of those being contracted placements. That's all I have, Commissioner.
Thank you, Ani. Under Old Business, just a couple of quick items. There was mentioned earlier that the Speaker of the House, Ohio House, visited our Workforce Center this past Friday, had an opportunity to meet with him. Purpose of his visit from our vantage point was to pitch him on some things that we think would be helpful for the state to participate in, in terms of the future of the Workforce Center. My comment is really, in addition to my thirty-year career as a, as an attorney, I'm retired from now, I've been in local public service for twenty-eight years, and having a Speaker of the House visit our county twice in the early days of their term as Speaker is, is new. That doesn't happen. We don't, we don't get that kind of attention around here. And so, you know, for whatever political feelings people may have about the Speaker's race and how that was handled, and how that came about, or whatever, okay, fine, kibbit's about that. This Speaker is paying attention to Fairfield County early days, so I'm real encouraged by that. Then the other thing, too, I know there's been some comment on it, but going into the meeting last night in Liberty Township, I was concerned. I didn't know there's going to be three hundred-plus people there, and I wasn't sure how the meeting was going to be conducted and whether it might go off the rails. It didn't go off the rails. I thought that the Liberty Township trustees ran a meeting last night that they should really be proud of, and so for all my concerns about how that would come down, I, they were, they were unwarranted. It was really well done. And then, Ani, I know, mentioned the deputy there. I think he got out of the meeting just a little bit early and actually went out, took his car, and shut the road down so that those three hundred folks could get out of there last night. and actually went out, took his car and shut the road down so that those three hundred folks could get out of there last night. Which turns out getting out of there was a whole lot easier than getting in there because that was difficult. But in any event, Commissioner Levesey, anything additional on old business?
Yeah, and I'll be real quick because of time. So I attended the State of the City last week. It was Mayor Scheffler's last address. He'll be retiring at the end of the year. And I think what was interesting about that in years past, we really didn't see shout-outs about the county and the cooperation as we did this last one, and I thought it was pretty good. One thing additional, I also had the opportunity to attend the rededication of Allen Chapel as well as Dr. Brown and the sheriff and a few others. You know, that's, it's really, it's really nice. You know, for many years, Allen Chapel was in disrepair. It was built in eighteen sixty-nine. It was actually founded in eighteen fourteen as a black community church. And those folks there at Allen Chapel, they're just dynamic. They're just amazing. And the community came together and helped with funding and help and additional things. And so I just, I just, again, I'm just blown away by the whole thing. I love everything that's looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other old business? Hearing none. New business? I have none. Commissioner Levesey on new business?
No, thank you.
Anybody else on new business?
Quick, let you know that I brought along an advanced copy of the March half of the month and it is relating to current agricultural use valuation and has an overlay of solar leases. That may be of interest to folks. So that's our March half of the month and it'll be introduced with the newsletter that'll be coming out tomorrow, the next day. And then the House Bill One, which has the intention of reducing income tax rates as well as property tax increases in the future. The first committee hearing on that is today at one-thirty and it'll be live streamed.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Anything else on new business? Hearing none. So can we stand on that?
Yeah, sure.
We're going to move on to our voting pattern historically and usually we would move up to the dais or something and make it look more official. But we're going to keep things moving right along. If you would please rise if you're able and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and pre-born. Bennett, do we have any announcements?
No announcements, Commissioner.
For approval of minutes for February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. So move.
Second.
Discussion. Please start a roll.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey.
Yes.
Minutes pass two to zero. From the commissioners, a Resolution Twenty-Two-Three dash zero-two dot twenty-eight dot A, a resolution authorizing the approval of proclamations.
Under commissioners, I move Resolutions A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Second, discussion. What do we got, Ani?
Five proclamations here. The first one is recognizing Mary Ann Murphy and I believe Dr. Brown is receiving that.
All right.
Let's take this opportunity to say thank you to the Board of Commissioners for the support of women leadership and the county of Lancaster County, Ohio University for the series of events that are part of the leadership summit. Appreciate the support and that we'll make sure this is here. You to be received in the form of an invitation of one.
Burke, do you kind of like that?
Yes, yes, if you're unable and we certainly gathered all of them, a number of different leaders, I think, Bennett was.
So, yeah, I'm sure. I think we're very good today, so this is going to be. Please, one, two, three, one, two, three. Thank you, Dr. Brown. What's next?
We're going to recognize Sunshine Week and Deputy County Administrator Jeff Porter is going to join you for that one.
All right. So an interesting footnote on Sunshine Week, there's some group out there, I think they're called kind of something, I don't know. But anyway, they evaluate counties on their transparency and their provision of information to the community. Again, I recall back in two thousand and eleven when I became a commissioner, they had issued their grade for Fairfield County on this score. And I believe we had received a D or something, maybe it was a C, but it was bad. And in the year, more recent years, they recognized us as being more transparent and providing, you know, more information to the public and the community. And I think for many years now, we continually receive As from that organization that rates local governments on whether they're they're doing a good job in getting information out. Sound right?
That sounds right.
All right.
One, two, three, one, two, three. Thanks.
John Coaches is going to join you in recognizing Severe Weather Awareness Week.
So John Coaches has a couple of hats. One of them is our Emergency Management Director. It's interesting that this should be up today, given that last night at about five forty-five, I thought it was time to leave to go to the Liberty meeting. And so, you know, there was, but there was a tornado watch out and some high winds and stuff. And I called Ani and I was like, are you already on your way? Because I'll pick you up. And she was already on her way. I didn't know if we should be out in that or not. I'm not sure, but we were, as were hundreds of other people who just said, to heck with that tornado watch, I'm going to this meeting. So any reports last night of significant?
Yeah, absolutely. Touchdown in Pickaway County at the Orient Prison. Touchdown in Butler County. So it's, it's an earlier start every year. What that, that tornado season is going to start earlier and early for us.
On behalf of the Commissioner's Office, we appreciate the work you do and are happy to recognize this as a particular time of year when people should be paying attention to those watches and warnings and probably not doing what we did last night, which was just drive right out into it.
I'm sure that you were safe and that you, you knew where the weather pattern was coming and you were safe there.
Oh, we were all over it.
One, two, three, one, two, three. Thanks.
Next up is a proclamation recognizing International World Water Day. And that is Tony.
So we heard some things today, a public comment, and we heard more last night at the Liberty meeting regarding people's questions and concerns regarding the preservation of aquifers and the safety of the water supply in Fairfield County in terms of our local government or whatever. Tony's kind of on point for that and at least as it relates to the provision of county water to folks and the aquifers that we access in that provision. Tony, any comments?
Yes, I was surprised last night. People were bringing up the need for water. As you can see in the news with East Palestine, that's number one thing on their list. So as you get into it, people are going to see that this is very viable, what we have. We have with commissioners, the blessing, we've already purchased future water looks.
Appreciate your work on that and happy to recognize this.
One, two, three, one, two, three. Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Great work last night.
And the last of our five proclamations, we're going to recognize March as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month and we have Dr. David Oul. Anne, you going to join us as well?
So as opposed to Mayor Bay, not no. Dr. Oul, let's say the title right, Executive Director or?
Superintendent.
Superintendent of the State of County of Developmental Disabilities. And the commissioners, I think, I mean, you're always welcome to your point of view. You've been very supportive to your organization over the years. Really appreciate what you all do. I don't know how much people know about your operations, but you know, fair enough, but I would be sure to appreciate the comments.
Well, thank you. We share your point of view from the commissioners, the county administrator, deputy administrator, all around the table, elected officials and other Fairfield County team members. We enjoy an unbelievable partnership and a vast amount of support. We're so grateful for that. I'm just telling you, it's been alluded to multiple times here already today. It's absolutely true. Bay County boards do not have the type of relationship that we have with their county offices, administrators, and elected officials. So we're very grateful for it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Go ahead and do a picture if that's all right. Let's go look at that camera there for a minute.
Okay.
All right. One, two, three, one, two, three. Oh, you already got it. All right.
Further discussion? Please start a roll.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes two to zero. From Fairfield County Clerk of Courts Title Division, Resolution Twenty-Two-Three dash zero-two dot twenty-eight dot H, a resolution approving an account-to-account transfer and a major object expense category, Clerk of Courts Title Division.
Second discussion? Start a roll.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes two to zero. From Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, Resolution Twenty-Two-Three dash zero-two dot twenty-eight dot I, a resolution to request for appropriations for receipts for EMA grant fund, twelve twenty ninety fifty-four, firehouse subs grant award.
So under Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, I move Resolutions I, J, and K.
Second discussion?
Thanks again to firehouse subs for supporting our document.
Further discussion? Please start a roll.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes two to zero. From the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution Twenty-Two-Three dash zero-two dot twenty-eight dot L, a resolution to authorize the disposal of obsolete vehicles and equipment within the Fairfield County Engineers' Office by public auction.
Second discussion? Further discussion? Please start a roll.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes two to zero. From the Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution Twenty-Two-Three dash zero-two dot twenty-eight dot P, a resolution authorizing the approval of an advance from the general fund to fund twenty-five ninety-three concealed handgun license.
Second discussion? Start a roll.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Motion passes two to zero. From Fairfield County Soil and Water Conservation District, Resolution Twenty-Two-Three dash zero-two dot twenty-eight dot Q, a resolution to sign the ESCO agreement for the Rickley Farm and authorization to sign the agricultural easement for the Rickley Farm at a closing to be scheduled through the Clean Ohio Local Agricultural Easement Purchase Program with the Ohio Department of Agriculture.
Second discussion? Start a roll.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes two to zero. For the payment of bills, Resolution Twenty-Two-Three dash zero-two dot twenty-eight dot R, a resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
Second discussion? Start a roll.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes two to zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for March seventh, twenty-twenty-three at seven PM at the Pleasantville Community Center located at two hundred and seven West Columbus Street, Pleasantville, Ohio.
Tomorrow next Tuesday is an evening meeting at the Pleasantville Communities.
All right. Is there any other item that anybody would like to bring to attention to the commission at this time? Hearing none. I've got ten twenty-four. My next appointment isn't until ten thirty, which would give us a whole six minutes if you're willing. Commissioner Levesey, I'll accept a motion.
Motion due adjourned.
I got a motion due adjourned in a second. All those in favor, seeing if I was saying aye, aye, both same sign. The motion carries. The commission is adjourned and we thank you all for coming.